Good evening. The May 17 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Longview is now called to order. Commissioner Harkey will lead us in the invocation. Please rise.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and just thank you for the opportunity to come here, Lord, and meet and discuss matters of the city, Lord. We just, we all pray for wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of the city. And we just thank you, Father, for this day. In your name I pray. Amen.
Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Next item is approval of the minutes from our last meeting in April. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them? And are there any changes? If not, we'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. We are now at the citizen comment portion of our meeting. The portion, this portion of citizen comment are those comments made other than the public hearing items that we have on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak on an item that's on the agenda, please wait until that time to speak. If you, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the public record. Are there any attendees that wish to make a citizen comment at this time? This is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We are on the consent agenda, which are the items that are Platts that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public or the applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. Would anyone like for our consent agenda item tonight to be removed for placing on the regular agenda for discussion? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion in a second.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our regular agenda, the purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The commission also considers Platts. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order, first from staff, then from the applicant, and then the general public, and that includes those in support of and in opposition to the request. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the commission, as I said earlier, please begin by stating your name and address and try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the commission will vote on the request. Zoning requests and Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on June 9. Regular agenda item A, Angela will introduce it.
Thank you. Consider application P 22-07 ABC subdivision filed by three gen properties to plat approximately 3.973 acres of abstract 258 PP Rain survey into two commercial lots located on the west side of Highway 259 north, north of Janet K Drive. The applicant is requesting to plat, to plat this property into two commercial lots located on 259. The applicant has not installed sidewalks or provided an estimate for the required infrastructure with a letter of credit prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The staff does recommend a conditional approval with the following requirements, that the applicant provide that estimate and letter of credit for the sidewalks or installs the sidewalks. Once all those conditions are met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, staff? Is the applicant present? Would you please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and tell us about your request?
I'm Mark Lane, 486 West Loop 571 South, Henderson, Texas. And I'm open to any questions on this. I'm with Johnson &amp; Pace. We're the surveyors behind this.
Excellent. Any questions of the applicant? Would you like to tell us a little bit more about it?
I can only tell you what, it's ABC auto parts. It's on the north lot and on the south. I don't know what they're going to be doing with that.
Do the commissioners have any questions of the staff or applicant? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your attendance. We will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Is that motion with the conditions?
With the conditions.
Yes.
Okay. Is that clear enough now that we need to restate it?
Can Mr. Noon please restate that? Motion?
Okay, I make a motion to approve the application P 22-7.
With the conditions?
With the condition, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item B, Angela will introduce it.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 22-14 filed by Winona 416 LTD requesting a rezone from agricultural to light commercial C1 zoning district for approximately 8.691 acres of abstract 186 D Sanchez survey tract 14 section 8 and abstract 186 D Sanchez survey tract 14-02 section 8 located on the northwest corner of McCann Road and George Ritchie Road. The applicant is requesting a rezone from agricultural to light commercial. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is not consistent with our comprehensive plan along with the future land use map, which does designate this area for low-density residential as well as retail. In addition, there are no similar zoning or uses directly adjacent to this property inside the city limits. The property is currently surrounded by agricultural and single-family zoning districts. The Leadco Business Park is near this property and is zoned heavy commercial. You can see on the heavy in the dark red on the map. However, it is across McCann Road, which is a major thoroughfare. It is a collector. The property to the north that is located outside the city limits is a residence with a home-based business that is automotive repair. The properties to the east across McCann Road are residential homes. In 2019, staff facilitated a neighborhood meeting to discuss development along George Ritchie corridor. During that time, we heard from a lot of the residents within this area, and overwhelmingly we heard that they wanted to keep this corridor mainly residential with some retail nodes. The comprehensive plan states that retail and office type uses are more appropriate adjacent to residential uses and create positive relationships in terms of compatibility. The future land use map is a guide, is to guide the allocation of land uses in a pattern that is intended to produce greater compatibility between the different types of land uses. The applicant has also provided some additional slides, including a letter of support from the property owner as well as Leadco. However, we, staff has had conversations with Mr. Mansfield, and they are more supportive of, even though the letter does state that they are support, in support of multifamily and light commercial. After staff has, after discussions with Mr. Mansfield, he said he is more supportive of a heavier retail type use, not light commercial. With that being said, staff makes a recommendation based on the future land use map and surrounding uses, staff makes a recommendation that we rezon this property to general retail. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
So on to C1, but what kind of businesses would that allow?
So C1 would allow for like a billiard hall. It does, general retail actually allows for automotive uses, but C1 does allow for a little bit more intense automotive uses. If we can kind of go through, if you would like, the use chart, just to kind of go over what.
Now, this is light commercial? Is that what you're telling us? What is eligible to go under light commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're about to tell us what C1 is, what it allows?
Yes. So light commercial would allow building material sales. It would allow for cabinet upholstery shop. It would allow for a feed store, a large-scale print shop. It would allow for buy right storage and, storage and warehouse sales. It would allow for mini warehouse self-storage, wholesale office and sample rooms.
And so the main concern for the city is that the residential area is close by for the residential zoning?
That is correct. And our future land use map does not support it. If you look at our future land use map, it supports retail and residential along this corridor and in this area.
Do we know what the specific plan is for C1? I mean, they're wanting to rezon C1, but what project?
I don't, the applicant, they are here. I believe they have told me they don't know what they're wanting to do with this property, but they can, they're more than happy to come up to the.
Skip ahead.
No, you're fine.
That's okay. I'm glad you did. Let's go ahead and ask the applicant to come to the microphone and tell us about their project.
I'm Mark Smith, One North Noble here in Longview. I've got a handout I'd like to pass out to you. Your specific question was, what's our planned use for the property?
Yes.
We don't have one. We're looking at the property for development and trying to get set up for that and looking for the best use of it. I can go through some points here that might, might explain that.
So if you haven't gotten a purpose for it, what made you consider C1 versus retail?
I'm going to show you.
Okay.
So the, as Angela mentioned, in yellow is the property. We've got a letter of support to the west from that property owner, which that's vacant property with a residential home that's 40 years old on it. Letter of support from the people south. Then she mentioned the letter of support from Leadco. Those letters are in your handout there. The automotive shop just to the north of the property, which joins the fence, would require C2 by the city's description. It's heavy automotive repair. They've got a chassis dynamometer that tests race cars in there. It's very loud. The other little spot on McCann up past the first house requires C1. That is storage buildings and storage. So we've got the letters from all the property owners. There's one little triangle there between the property and McCann Road and Leadco. That's a vacant house. We contacted that person. They were not interested in participating, talking about it. We contacted the very, the next property to the west from what's shown as letter of support, and we were thinking about doing multifamily on the west end of that at that time. They did not agree with that. We withdrew that application. We will not do that. If you could go back to the land, the land use map, the long-range map? When that map was made, you can see that the Leadco was BC. BC is a business complex for office complexes, for business offices. Since then, it's subsequently been zoned heavy commercial in C2, which changed the whole area out there from what was planned when this map was made. So I don't know what would have been planned if that had been, if that was someone to C2 in that time, or planned to be C2. So we think we're stepping down from C2, which is directly above us, those businesses will be grandfathered in when annexed into the city. We're stepping down from the east to C1. The real reason, the other reason is, this property doesn't lie well topography. It's got a ditch and a pond in the middle of it, and you can't modify it to have the traffic that retail. It's better suited for a lower traffic use, like storage buildings, like Angela said, like a cabinet shop, print shop, building supplies. Wholesale plant nursery falls under C1. It's better suited for that. It has less traffic in and out. It won't work for convenience store or strip center. We got estimates it'd be over a million dollars to fill the hole up in the middle of it. So we think since it's consistent with adjoining property just to the north, it's consistent with the east, there's no adjoining landowners that have any objection, they all written support for the thing. And just due to the topography and what we could be used for, we ask that you consider this and approve it. Be glad to answer any questions.
Where are the homeowners that previously had, had issues with it in the past?
Well, so we had a neighborhood meeting a couple of years ago, like I said, in 2019. And that, yes, it was pre-COVID, and it was at Spring Hill High School. So when George Ritchie was put in, we decided to have a neighborhood meeting to kind of try to see what, what kind of development the people in the Spring Hill area wanted along George Ritchie roadway. And actually, we had two P&amp;Z commissioners that were in attendance at that meeting. And for the most part, the neighbors overwhelmingly said, we want residential along this roadway, except in nodal development, like here in retail, where you would see retail nodal development. But for the most part, they would like, they would prefer to see residential along this roadway.
What would be your, you guys answered to something, to that statement, when, when he said that the way that it's set up, the topography wouldn't allow for retail because of that, the, the, the lower area? It wouldn't be fiscally possible to go in and, or?
It'd just be cost prohibitive. It'd be over a million dollars to, you can, you mind? I don't know which way we're going.
Yeah, I would just say to that, that whether you're developing C1 or retail, footprints, square footages, parking access, those are all going to be the same considerations that you're going to have to deal with. You know, he did mention storage units and things like that. That would be allowed with an SUP in general retail, you know, that they could ask for. You know, and they mentioned the project kind of to the north there. That would be a more general retail with a specific use permit. But I mean, as far as topography, I mean, that, that's not going to dictate commercial over retail. I mean, that's, that's going to be one in the same.
The business to the north, it's, it clearly falls in C2, heavy commercial.
Yeah, no, I was talking about the storage units that are to the north there.
The northeast, the business that joins this property is heavy commercial.
Yeah, the business to the north, there's a, there's actually, there's a house with their private garage and a swimming pool that's actually directly adjacent, and then behind that, they do have an auto repair shop.
The house is their office and their home. Yes.
On that, so they are over there, they are not a C2, obviously, right? So they're grandfathered in? Yeah, it's a, it's a small footprint that would be, if, if, if annexed in, it would be an existing non-conforming. Right. If they were to sell the property, the new property owner would have to conform with the future land use? They, they could continue a land use as long as they didn't make significant changes, but they would not be able to expand it or increase the intensity. And, you know, when we're talking about general differences between retail and commercial, a lot of it has to do with intensity of the business, size and scale of the business, and also the biggest is going to be outdoor sales, outdoor storage. General retail is more related to businesses that, whether it be high traffic or not, is going to be more related to inside a building or service-related. And I think if you go back, go back to the future land use map, if you, we, we mentioned, Angela mentioned nodal concept. And that nodal concept is that it's, it's at that intersection, at that node, and it would be business types that would support the work, the workforce that's at the business campus. And I think he kind of mischaracterized what that BC actually stands for, because it is business campus, which is conducive to the, the complex. It's not an industrial complex out there. It's a business park, which is consistent with business campus. If you look in the, in the comprehensive plan, it's not industrial, but that's not an industrial park. That's a business campus. It's, you know, built and everything's internal. You know, you don't have the businesses that are on the outskirts. They all have internal access roads. It's very controlled and very unique with each other. But that, that retail, and that was some of the conversations that I had with Wayne as well as making sure that this intersection complements the business park and really is retail that would be supportive of the residential and also supportive of the, the traffic at the business park. Because when you talk about traffic, you're talking about workforce. You're not talking about customer traffic, because it, it's primarily distribution out there or internet sales. It's, you're not going to have the walk-in traffic. But, and that's why you see those nodes right there are very small nodes, because it's not meant to be a large-scale commercial corridor. It's meant to service and support, whether it be personal services, office, retail, you know, to support that area, not be another loop 281 with commercial businesses.
Angela, I got a question. It's, it's a, is it on agricultural right now? Everyone want to go with C1. But now you're saying that if somebody came in and wanted rezon residential, they could do that? Correct?
If, if they requested residential, it would comply with the future land use map? Yes.
Or C2?
Or retail. Not C2. C2 is heavy commercial.
Okay, so C2 would never be considered the, the spot?
It's not consistent.
No, it's, it's not consistent with the future.
So how far, how far down is Dollar General from where we're looking at as far as?
It's across the highway.
Yeah, Dollar General is.
Yeah, it's quite a, go back to the.
It's a mile or so. It's right here. You see that? This is Dollar General.
Yeah, and I think even, you know, that corner there that Leadco owns, that's at the, the south intersection there, at one time, you know, they had a, a C store that was looking at it. They want to make sure that that property is something that's supportive. They're very concerned about what goes in and around them, that it's going to be supportive and not take away or contradict or be in competition with.
Well, I understand that, but the question I've got is, you've got a piece of property there the city is sitting on, and are we waiting for somebody to come in and make it residential? Are we just sitting on that property for that to happen?
No, it's, it's the future land use guide is that it should be retail, that it should be some kind of retail, personal service supportive, not, you know, I mean, they could put residential there, but it's not really the highest and best use for that corner.
No, absolutely. I agree.
And, you know, although multifamily can go in retail, we heard overwhelmingly at that corridor meeting that they did not want multifamily in the area, that there was concerns about, you know, that kind of density in the school district and the traffic and all of that with the Spring Hill area.
So if it's not in line with the future land use map, why are we even having a conversation? How much autonomy do we have with regard to voting on something that's not in line with what?
Sure. So P&amp;Z's role is to make recommendations to city council, and it's to hear, you know, support and, and comment, but it's also to take into consideration the platform that the city council has adopted as that guide. You know, does that mean that we disregard those concepts? No, we shouldn't. And, you know, when we talk about, you know, when, when does it make sense to go against the future land use map or change the future land use map? That would be when conditions in an area change, you know, when, and of course, you know, this area, you know, with George Ritchie just opening up, you know, it's fairly early on in the development phase of this corridor. And so, you know, we really haven't seen conditions change. We're actually just now seeing the conditions fall in line with our plan. And that's the thing is, we have a plan of what we want it to look like. We need to move forward and, and let those dominoes fall.
So if it's, if it's voted up or down either way, or let's just say it's, it's being hypothetical, it's, it's voted down and, okay, it's not happening, they can come back at a different time and revisit it or no?
Sure. So we, staff doesn't vet proposals. We can't say, no, you can't apply. We don't have that authority. That's, that city council's authority is to make that ultimate decision.
I mean, like, you know, if things change down the road and said, okay, it's not going the way we thought it was going to go.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, we've done that. About every five to seven years, you know, we'll reevaluate the comprehensive plan. We're going to be doing a refresh on the comprehensive plan. We'll look at the future land use map to see. The reality is some, and we've even brought, staff suggested changes to the future land use map. When we see something changed nearby or something changed that dictates a different, you know, vision for that area, then we'll make that change and recommend it. You know, staff's opinion is, we haven't seen that change here. You know, the, the business park that is directly to the east, yes, it's heavy commercial, but it's not directly adjacent. You have George Ritchie and you have McCann Road that are definitive boundaries that say, hey, that, that zoning line should stop here from this point back towards Spring Hill School really should be residential development. And then at the intersection at the note, you know, if we look farther down, we wouldn't recommend retail mid-block of George Ritchie. You know, we don't, the, the future land use map and comprehensive plan don't support George Ritchie being another loop 281. It supports it being for residential and, you know, convenience store or something very similar that's going to support that residential.
How close is Gap building to the area that we're talking about there?
Gap's to the north. It's off of 1844.
Yeah, and they're inside the park.
Yeah. But their boundary is on, on 1844.
But there were no plans for that when you had the neighborhood meeting, correct?
Yeah, the business park was already established.
Not the Gap facility itself.
Not specifically, but the zoning in all four business park-type uses were in play, yes.
I was at the 2019 meeting, and, and I can echo what they've said. You know, the, McCann Road was really considered a, the kind of the dividing line. You know, they were looking at, you know, from McCann over to the Loop, it's already the business park, it's more commercial, and the, you know, the homeowners that were at that meeting were overwhelmingly wanting residential down. And I think y'all even brought up, you know, on these intersections, you know, highest and best use is to have some kind of retail, you know, gas station or some kind of little office deal like on HG Mosley there at Bill Owen, something more like that, a coffee, a coffee shop or something, you know, was kind of the idea. But the landowner or the residents were really wanting that to be residential and not Hawkins with one street and, you know, 20 houses. They were wanting more neighborhoods along that road. Was the, was the general consensus at that time.
You did mention the, the residential people. The nearest people to this, houses that exist now are like 600 feet on that very tip, but most of it, it's over 800 feet to any residents.
But the concern is, if we have a future land use map, because we want more residential there, we don't want to discourage that by putting other businesses in there now.
Our consideration on the future land use map was that since, which the definition city has on their, on their future land use map is business campus, regional office development. When that got switched to heavy commercial, we felt like that area that future land use map had been modified and that this might be appropriate, considering the joining property is heavy commercial, there's C1 light commercial street.
Right, but the problem is, we didn't, we didn't control that. That's existing already to the north.
No, I know, but they.
We didn't switch it, because actually, that zoning was in place before the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, as we see it, was updated. That was, that was a new future land use category to categorize that business campus, because that's not an industrial park. That's a business campus. So here's my concern. If, if it were to be approved as a C1, if then the adjacent owner comes down and says, hey, I'd like C1 too. Nothing to stop them. Right, because it's not spot zoning anymore, because it's got adjacent and then it just goes against the future land use even more. Yeah. Or to come back and say, well, C1's not really working. We want C2. Because we already have commercials, why can't we go C2? And so that, that, once that door's open, it's hard to, you know, especially without And so that, that, once that door's open, it's hard to, you know, especially without, you know, without any concrete plans, you know, and, and with this, this is really the only area that we've had in a long time in Longview that we really get to be on the front end of the development and really, I don't want to say controlled development, but control what it looks like. And that's what we hear through the comprehensive plan and through so many of our public meetings is, we want to have opportunity to have a say in how it develops. This is our opportunity.
Good questions, good comments. I do have another speaker card. Thank you, Mike. Excuse me, thank you, Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
Smith. I have a speaker card for Mike Smith. Would you all?
I'll go ahead and speak.
All right.
I'm involved with my brother on this property and, and I am in support of it, but that's because we're the tentative buyer for the property. And, and I do consider it contiguous, even though there's a roadway in between it. I mean, there, it is a city right away in a city street, but the property beside it is C4, and originally it was going to be a business campus, and that has changed and it is now, and it does, it's not industrial, it's heavy commercial. And we're wanting to go light commercial on the property and to use, if we want to put a nursery or somebody wants to put a nursery in there, and that'd be well-suited with the topography, because it, the topography does, does not yield itself, and that's just a fact of the land. And to be honest with you, we will be the adjoining owner on the west, and we're not trying to change that from agricultural, we're not trying to change it. And to answer with Mike Shirley's comment, if, I, I don't think we're opening a door. I think this is, I would not have any intent to come back and come back for a C2 after getting a C1. I think C1 would be sufficient. We'll buy the property as an investment and in the long range, hopefully get it developed. And I'll be glad to answer other questions as well.
So you see one as a, as a possibility, why not retail?
Because of the topography.
Right, but the topography needs to be addressed regardless if you use C1 or retail.
You don't have to address, address it and have flat parking lots. It's not going to be a high-intensity use for, for retail customers and access with ADA access and parking and everything. It's got over 30 feet of fall on it and a pond. And, and we felt this would be the best use to make it viable for us in the acquisition of the property. And I'll be glad to answer other questions as well. I mean, we find out if we've got other people in opposition.
Any other questions before we move to the public hearing?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike Smith. All right, we will now open the public hearing on this agenda item. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this agenda item? Additional comments? Seeing none, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none? We will close the public hearing, ask if there are any additional questions, comments of the applicant or the, or the staff.
So you're saying general retail would not be a consideration of yours?
It, it just really won't work. I mean, I can't go out there and build a level parking lot and then build a, a level strip center or something of that nature in there. We got an estimate to, to level that eight acres and it was in excess of a million dollars. And I add a million dollars onto my purchase price and nobody can afford the land.
I, I just wish that you had an idea of what specifically you're going to put in there. That's what bothers me.
We do not have a tenant, we do not have a buyer at this time. If it's not zoned, we're not going to go look for one. I mean, I, I, I think I would be getting the cart before the horse before, I mean, we have not acquired the property, our contract's contingent on the rezoning.
My, my concern, when, when they were doing this meeting, you know, the, the envision was something like in Tyler, the Tyler Oak Creek, you know, this can be a bigger residential type development between McCann and, and Gilmore Road with the commercial being on the other side. And when I look at something like this as the front of it, you know, if you come in with a nursery, does, does somebody put high-end residential directly behind it, you know?
Right, well, behind it right now is C4.
Well, I mean, further, further to the west.
Further to the west, and that's not at the city limits at this time, but we, I guess, as far as residential goes, the right-of-way on the George Ritchie is almost 300 feet wide. It's five lanes, and personally, I wouldn't want my house running on that street.
Yeah, no, and the city wouldn't either. I think the idea for the George Ritchie area is that you would have entrances to neighborhoods that are connected and have large-scale residential.
Yeah, like, like Old Jacksonville. I mean, it's the same type side street.
And I believe there's, there's development, was it the Virginia Woods subdivision that is under development on the south side to the, to the west there?
East of the, yeah, east of the high school.
That is, it's similar in nature that I think will kick off more of that property being developed and interconnected with, you know, maybe a multitude of sizes.
This, this is an, an eight acre size, so it's not going to yield itself for a large residential development.
Sure, and that's, that's where the retail is, is the-
Well, that's, that's where we come and we deal with the topography and it, it, it won't warrant the expense. You know, if we go in there and we put in some mini, maybe the mini warehouses, maybe-
Yeah, and the mini warehouses could go with an S U P. And the amount of concrete, and I think we had a zoning case last month where we had mini warehouses, and the footprint that those require is pretty large compared to even retail.
Right, but they don't have to be leveled. They can be tiered.
Sure.
I mean, there's one over on Eastman Road now that's tiered and things of that nature. But I don't know that that's our use. We're wanting to acquire the property and then develop it post that. And, and the C1, I still feel is conducive with the adjoining properties.
Looking at the future land use map, that's what, it just opens up a can of worms, because we've set a precedent in the past with things that we've had to do in accordance with it, like those-
Your, your land use map, you didn't really follow it when you built the, the Target facility?
But, but we did.
Target?
All right.
Dollar General.
Yeah. We did, and that's what I said previously, is that, that B C is business campus and that, that is a business campus. It's, it's not a, it's not office in the, in, in terms of our-
It didn't have to be built, zoned Z4 for that to go in there, C4?
C2?
No. And actually, that, that whole Leadco business park was zoned heavy commercial prior to the future land use area changing to B C. If we went back to the previous land use plan, it coincided with that heavy commercial. When we updated the future land use map and comprehensive plan in, what was that, 1815?
About 15, 2015.
We added new categories and B C was one of those that's kind of specific to this area. I don't know that you'll see many other B Cs on the future land use map area. That's because it's, it's not an industrial park, it's not commercial, it's a business campus. And under that business campus, you know, it's that large-scale, you know, warehousing, you know, you've got the, what's the other businesses that are out there?
Technology.
Technology, yes, it's business and technology campus, not an industrial park like you would have on, you know, East Marshall.
I mean, I guess you've also got, in, in the business park, you have an oilfield service company.
There is.
Yes, Bass Engineering.
Yeah, they're not, they're not an oilfield service company. They're, I think they're cathodic protection engineering, but it's, it's their business office. And, and, and they were actually in their previous location, they were in an area that was annexed in and was non-compliant with zoning like we're talking about to the north, and they wanted to expand and they couldn't because of the zoning, so they had to move somewhere that was more conducive to that, because the zoning surrounding them wouldn't allow that. But that is, it's not, it's not really a, an oilfield service company like you would say, like with Techwell Services or something like that, where you're going to have a lot of that heavy equipment. It's all high-tech inside the building, they send people out and it's high-tech engineering. And that's why Leadco allowed them to go there, because Lead, Leadco has very specific requirements in their deed restrictions as far as what can and can't go in there, and they're very, you know, concerned about maintaining that similarity. I mean, there's people that approach them and want to buy a property and they won't sell it to them because it doesn't fit with their long-term goal for that area.
I've got a question.
One more question, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Have you bought the property yet or you're looking to buy the property?
We, we're under contract, our contract's contingent on the rezoning.
Okay, but you haven't got any data as far as when you might start the construction on whatever? Or when you're going to-
Basically, our, we've got through the next council meeting, I believe on the ninth, and then that would trigger the closing on the property if the property gets rezoned, and then we would start working on that post that. We're not going to start development or, or full development plans prior to purchase. You know, we're, I think the C1, in my opinion, is reasonable. I understand, I've heard arguments from, from the other side that are pleased and, and we're receptive to that. We're, we did listen to the adjoining landowner to the west, they said they didn't want apartments in there. We withdrew that application and will market that house and land as agricultural. So-
If you develop that land, would you use local contractors?
I'm sorry, what?
If you develop that land, would you use local contractors?
Sure, you know that, so, I was one in, 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 in believing that strongly.
Well, I've, I mean, my concern is, we've got commercial, we've got residential, it's all over the place in that area right there. And I understand we have a, a future land use map, but we've got a, a plan of land there that it's going to cost a million dollars to level off if you do it. I don't want to see an opportunity missed to provide jobs and income. We've got somebody willing to develop.
Well, I think it might cost a million dollars, and just because it's not worth to them doesn't mean it's not worth it to the right buyer or the other developer, you know, depending on what type of business, you know, if somebody wants to put a, whatever, Hyatt gas station or whatever, and they might say, oh, a million dollars, whatever, you know, that's the problem.
So how long you want to wait?
Well, my concern on it is if we're ever going to get high, high-value residential homes in, in Longview in this area, it takes a while in Longview, and we're not going to get, you know, a, a nice subdivision to come in if there's an eyesore on the corner. And I don't know if this would be an eyesore on the corner, but we don't know.
You've got, you've got an existing C4 that has a, an automotive dyno, and, and when they're testing, it's not conducive for residential down.
Sure, but we, we didn't control that and can control that, because-
Well, but it's, it's there. I mean, if you're, if I'm a developer looking at putting in a subdivision and that's operating next to it, it, it would be taken into consideration on the lease.
But, but the hope is, based on the future land use, is that, that C2 would eventually go away, because the business owner retires, sells the property and whatnot, and then it doesn't fit within that category anymore.
Yeah, and if you're familiar with that area, if you're familiar with that area, that, that East Texas Muscle Car's there, north of there, you've got Harris Cove, which is another residential, so you don't have really any other commercial, it's kind of a blip, you know, and unfortunately, it's outside the city, so we can't control it.
Right, there's two out there.
But we do have the opportunity to control everything else that's around there.
Right, and Mike, there are two outside the city, not just one.
There's a rock defense company due west of it, Poplar Chalk.
And, and due, due east of it is mini storage.
Which, which can be in general retail with an S U P.
Okay.
I think we need to finalize this.
All right, thank you. If I can answer anything, I'll be glad.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think, think we need to finalize our questions. Any additional questions before we call for the motion? Of staff or of the applicants? Hearing none? Is there a motion and a second?
Make a motion to deny.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Motion to deny.
Motion to approve.
We have a-
Have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Now we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
All, all in favor of denying?
Yes, and all in, this is the motion that carries.
You got two things, let's clarify.
Well, he has the opportunity to vote.
Yeah, so the motion on the floor is to deny, there's a second, so the vote would be along that motion to deny. So if you're voting in favor of the motion, it would be in favor of a denial.
Is that clear?
Clear to me.
All right, we do have a motion to deny this, this agenda item. All in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Do we need a show of hands? I think so. Is there any question? Was there a more than one denial of?
I think we, I think we captured that.
Yeah, I believe we captured that.
Okay.
Glad that was clarified.
So this motion carries as being denied?
Correct.
Correct.
This agenda item is denied, is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you.
Regular agenda item C, Angela?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z22-15 filed by Northwest Longview Investments LLC requesting a rezone from general retail to light commercial zoning districts for lots 3, 4, Block 1, Park Place subdivision located in 1901 and 1905 West Loop 281. The applicant is requesting a rezone from general retail to light commercial zoning district. The applicant is proposing a billiard hall at this location. There is currently heavy commercial zoning directly to the south of this property. Loop 281 is a texted roadway and is classified as a principal arterial. These uses are, are, I'm sorry, these roadways are appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. I am lost for words today. Staff does find that the zoning change is consistent with adjacent zoning, therefore, this request does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
This is the old college campus area?
Mm-hmm, this is where, yes.
Is this a new building or a purposed-in-one that's?
It, it's currently the, a strip center.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think where Vista College was there.
Yes, okay.
The only thing I saw in here was Billiard Hall, so that's not going to be a 70,000 square foot billiard hall.
No, no, yeah. All the other uses, there's currently a few uses in there, and they're already allowed by right. I believe the Billiard Hall, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Billiard Hall is going right here in this area.
So the, the whole thing has to be rezoned, C1 to put a Billiard Hall in one of those spots, is that correct?
Um, I mean, no, no.
You can rezone-
A portion.
-a portion of a parcel.
Yeah.
We don't generally get in the habit of that, because it's harder to capture the exact bound, because zoning is pretty specific, where the future land use map is not as specific. And so traditionally, we rezone entire properties, so we don't get into problems down the road. We certainly don't have to.
But to be clear, you have to be C1, it's not a special use in retail or anything?
That is correct, yeah.
C1 will also take care of the other businesses that are in there already?
Yeah, all those businesses are allowed by right and general retail zoning.
And that would carry through to the light commercial? So they don't even, okay, got you, got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, think of, think of a pyramid, as you go up, everything below is allowed. Got you.
Shall we move to the applicant? Is the applicant present and would you like to come to the microphone and tell us about your project? Name and address, please.
Betty Woolley, 430 North Center Street, and I'm a owner, represent the partners in the project, and it is, it's the old Vista College strip center. It's the Gifts of Grace space where they had their resale shop a couple of years ago, 6,200 square feet, and it's an upscale billiards hall that we're proposing there in that space.
Ninety percent of the shopping center is probably vacant now, correct?
It is. We, we're, we're talking to some prospective tenants in the Vista College space, but it's been tied up in a bankruptcy, and there's an upcoming sheriff sale here in a couple of weeks to get rid of the property that was left behind. There's some tax lanes that are going to be perfected in that sheriff sale and then-
How much of the Billiard Hall would be within that old shopping center?
6,200 square feet.
It's what, I'm sorry?
6,200 square feet, and there's 110,000 square feet in the center, so- 6,200 square feet, and there's 110,000 square feet in the center, so.
110,000 square feet in the section that you have? That's identified in this display?
There's 110,000 square feet in the whole center, the Walmart center.
Okay.
This particular billiard hall is being proposed on 6,200 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Less than 5%.
I'm sorry?
Less than 5% of it.
Yes, sir.
You said it's an upscale billiard hall, could you explain that a little bit?
The prospective tenant is here if you'd like to hear from him.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Woolley.
Hello, my name's Jeff Goodman, I live at 2908 Crossroads Drive. I do have a PowerPoint on this jump drive, but I don't know if you can have the ability to look at that or not.
We cannot, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, I only have a few copies of this, but I'd be more than happy to, if you guys want to share them. Talks about the vision and what we're hoping to do. A little backstory. Pre-COVID, Longview had two different locations that would I consider the competitive pool players that play in leagues, tournaments. We had two locations that we played at, one was the Wicked Kitty Saloon, which was just not too far from here on Tyler Street, and then also Herbendys Break Room, which was on Highway 80 where the Gilmer Road intersection is. Unfortunately, they both closed down. Now, everybody travels to Kilgore to play competitive leagues and tournaments and whatnot. And I'm just, I'm trying to bring something back to Longview. One of the biggest differences from what we had before to now would be a non-smoking establishment where I can promote growing the game, you know, bringing in the youth to teach them proper etiquette and, you know, share the love and passion of the game with anybody else that wants to learn. And, I mean, it's just, it's a great game. It all walks a life in it, you know, it's, you don't have to be wealthy to participate, you know, you, just anybody can walk in and play, and if they enjoy it, you know, learn the game the way it's supposed to be played.
So that full kitchen?
That is the plan, is to have a kitchen. It'll have like a light menu, it's not going to be like a full Applebee's type restaurant, just because, you know, when you compete and stuff, you don't want, you know, a heavy stomach.
Y'all can do beer wine?
That would be the plan, if you have a beer wine, yeah.
What kind of operating hours does this call for?
Typically, you're going to be noon to midnight or 2:00 a.m. with the extended, which is what I would promote, you know, just, or seek to do.
And how many days a week is that?
It would be seven days a week.
Seven days, okay.
Yeah, typically, we, right now, we have APA leagues that take place Sunday through Wednesday, and then usually you'll have tournaments and stuff that go on in the weekends. And then periodically throughout the year, we would host larger scale tournaments that would actually draw players in from all over the world, which they currently.
I think it would do well if it was kept clean and nice, because the ones that, I mean, I like to shoot pool, I don't do it very often, I've got one at home, but I would, I would go if it was clean and nice and.
Yep, and that's my goal, you know.
And smoke green?
My daughter plays with me, you know, and I'm trying to create a good fun establishment that is clean, that would, you know, allow anybody to go in there.
There's not one in Longview right now.
No, no. Even Herbendys, I mean, I love the place, I call it home, but, I mean, it wasn't the, I didn't feel comfortable, and my daughter would leave there at night, you know. So, you know, she was always escorted out.
In my mind, this is kind of general retail. I know it's not towards the code, but if I was just thinking billiard hall, I would have probably said general retail. So that part of it doesn't bother me really at all. You know, my question is rezoning the whole center, so I guess maybe, Buddy, more to your point, you know, as you're looking at a new tenant for the college spot, do you think that is more general retail going forward, or does it change more commercial? So do you think that light commercial would be, I mean, a future tenant, will it be more of a retail type tenant? Or do you think it'll be more of a light commercial type tenant?
To be honest with you, we're talking with a couple of tenants right now that I can't really, I can't tell you, you know, who they are, but they would fit into the light commercial, and one of them would take up a considerable amount of the space. But we've kind of, we've had our hands tied there since Vista College went into bankruptcy, and they haven't, we haven't been able to show the space. So this, this opportunity that's coming up would work in C1.
But that tenant wouldn't have worked in general retail?
Would have.
It would have worked in general retail as well? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing for this agenda item. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support? Seeing none, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this agenda item? Come to the microphone now. Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing and call for a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve this presentation.
Everybody jumped on that one.
We have a mass motion.
I live across the street from them, so I want it to happen.
We have a motion and a second. Are we okay there? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries, thank you. All right, regular agenda item D, Angela?
Thank you. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z 22-16 filed by Esbida Santiago requesting a rezone from general retail to single-family four zoning district for Lot 1, Block 662 Mulvine subdivision located at 1011 Sapphire Street. The applicant is requesting a rezone from general retail to single-family four zoning district. Currently, there is a single-family home located on the property, and the owner would like to bring this property into compliance with current zoning regulations as well as build in addition to the existing structure. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan and adjacent zoning, therefore, the request does not constitute spot zoning. The applicant is here and would be happy to speak on the request, but does require an interpreter. So if y'all have questions for her, one of our staff members will interpret for her, yes.
Thank you, Angela. We've had no request for additional questions. So, we will open the public hearing. By formality, we have to open the public hearing. Now is your time if you want to come and speak in support of or in opposition of this agenda item. Thank you. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Make a motion. Second approved.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you. Next agenda item, Angela, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 22-01 filed by MCP Parkview LP requesting a rezone of approximately 4.827 acres of Lot 2, Block 1, Hollybrook Seniors Community from general retail to planned development for a senior cottage development at an existing senior living community located at 601 and 603 Hollybrook Drive. So the applicant is requesting a rezone to planned development for a senior cottage development. The applicant is proposing 15 duplex-style buildings within this development that will serve seniors and will have a private drive access from the existing senior development that is located to the south and to the west of this property. The property is currently going through the subdivision process to subdivide this tract out so that it is a separate tract. They will meet all of the building code requirements as far as separation, and will have a minimum setback from the back of the curb to the house of 20 feet, a rear setback of 10 feet. A minimum totaled covered area for each structure will be 3,500 square feet and two and a half stories maximum and a minimum of two parking spaces per unit. This development will have internal sidewalks and actually does plan to tie into our existing trail system. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
So when you say tie in with the existing trail system, does that mean it's going to be public from other people walking the trail too? Like people can mosey around?
I believe so. I didn't see on the plan where there was going to be a gate, and so hopefully, there would be other, the people at the other assisted and senior living facility would be able to access those sidewalks and access the trail as well.
Any other questions of staff at this point? Is the applicant present?
I'm a representative engineer.
Yes, do you want to come to the microphone, give us your name and address? Are you Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Tell us about your project.
Alex Gonzalez, 13044 Cannon Road, 192 Tyler, Texas. I'm just representing the client, I'm with the engineer firm, Capco Engineering.
These are going to be leased units, right? They're not for sale?
Okay.
So if I'm understanding, there's 15 duplexes, so is that 30 units or?
That is correct, 30 units.
Okay.
It's very similar to what's on the Hawkins East extension where they have kind of the different concepts, all within a campus, the independent, the multifamily, independent, and then the transitional care and all, all the different options.
So the purpose of these is for the elderly and still have services available from, is it nursing home or?
Assisted living.
Assisted living. So they would have nurses and LBS and whatnot available from there?
Yes, that's correct.
Got you.
It's a growing demographic.
So it's going to be basically just about what Irbel is now?
That is correct.
You have any questions of Mr. Gonzalez? Thank you, sir. I do have another speaker card. Mary Hanley?
Hi, I'm Mary Hanley, and I live at 603 Hollybrook Drive in the independent living part. There's also, at 601 is the assisted living and the memory care section of the property as it exists right now. And I'm not sure if this falls into the same category as your discussion. It's on the property, so that's why I came. At the front of the property, on Hollybrook Drive, there is a sidewalk that goes down one side of the drive and ends at Hollybrook Drive. And then there's no sidewalk that goes down the other side of that driveway. And so I'm here to ask if y'all would consider, and maybe it's part of this package that you're talking about tonight, if y'all would consider putting a ramp from the sidewalk that just ends at Hollybrook Drive to go down to cross the drive, and then a ramp on the other side and a short sidewalk, just a few yards, to attach to the trail. Because now if you want to leave that, if you want to walk down that drive from the facility, the only way you can get to the trail is to step up, is to be in the drive itself, and then to either step up over the curb and walk a few yards to get to the trail, or if you are, and it's uneven ground. And I'm sorry, I don't have PowerPoint, but, oh, I just saw that, okay. I've got pictures of that, but if I, could I point, could I go up there and point to what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I just noticed that. So, the way to get from the drive, like the buildings are over here. So it's to go, you can take a walk down the sidewalk, and then it just ends. But if you want to get to the trail, to walk that beautiful trail that goes right next to it, you'd have to step down off the curb, go across there, step up a curb, go in the grass to get to the trail to walk it. Or, as I have seen some people do, I've seen a child take their parent that's in a wheelchair and literally run out here, I don't know if you can put your arrow up there, out into this busy street to then get to the trail to go across. And if anybody's in a scooter, they have to do the same thing. If anybody is a walker or a cane or just unsteady, seniors, instead of having to walk across that little strip of grass, I'm asking if y'all would consider putting a ramp and just a short sidewalk there and putting a little ramp there to be able to.
So they're, they're going through the plating process right now, so they will be required, because they're going to, they're actually going to parcel off a couple of lots. And so through that process, they will be required sidewalks and along Hawkins, I mean Hollybrook, excuse me, they will be required to put sidewalks in.
That would be wonderful.
Not, not on the other side of the driveway?
But this is not where they're building.
That is correct.
They're building way back.
Way back in the back.
But they would, across the frontage, they would be required to install sidewalks. And I don't know if it'd be required to go all the way and connect to the trail, because they don't own all of that property. But I believe part of their project is to connect to the trail internally, so you may not be able to get to it through the frontage, but you could get through a connection.
Through the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the part where they're building is behind. It's way, it's way behind, because it's, you have to pass assisted living and memory care, and you go past the independent living and then beyond that. So the trail that they're, that they are planning to do sidewalks on, they've said they want to do, is in that back part. I guess my, my concern is the safety of anybody, you know, for the past four years, that facility's been there for four years, is to safely.
So they're going to connect in the trail somewhere along this area?
They won't have to leave the property once it's done. It'll be internal in the back there, going toward the north.
Is it on the site plan?
It is, I mean.
Now, some of it is under fence, but I'm assuming that will be open for accessibility.
There's going to be a sidewalk from here that connects to the trail.
And that's from the cottages?
That is from the cottages, and the cottages will have some sidewalks.
So where on this diagram is independent living and assisted living right now?
You see right here?
That's the independent.
Yeah. And these are y'all's buildings, yeah.
That's the independent apartments right there, and then that's the.
Okay, and where's the driveway right now then?
Way far south, yeah. Further south.
Oh, that's true, that's a system, it's down here.
So it'd be a lot closer to go internally over to the trail.
That is correct, so it may be just easier for you to walk through here.
Okay.
And come across this sidewalk.
But they will have to do some additional sidewalks along the frontage.
And I know they have a sign up to sell the property in the front, right by Hollybrook Drive. So there again, I don't know if, once that sells, if those people, if it's the city. I'm just asking questions because I don't know.
So, yeah, it's on, the burden is on the developer to put that sidewalk in.
Oh, okay.
And that's part of their process, is they'll have to do that.
Yes.
Just not down the other side of that driveway going down.
But not where I was asking.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, I'm glad there's going to be a sidewalk. Well, we're glad you came, Mrs. Hanley. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak in support of or in opposition? Yes, did you have another comment?
I have another question, sorry. Do you know how long it's going to take to build these and have all that completed?
Mr. Gonzalez can answer that?
We just got the questions right now. People like to get construction started in the middle of the summer, but we've been taking a little bit of time through all this process, so I'm going to say it probably is going to start more towards the end of the summer. Originally, we were aiming towards the beginning of it.
And how long are you anticipating?
Probably nine to, nine months to a year.
About a year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any other questions? We're still in the public hearing mode. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. The last item on the agenda is a staff update from our prior meeting on May 12.
So, all items were approved by council. We did receive a petition after Planning and Zoning Commission on the items on Eastman Road, and it did meet the requirements to require supermajority vote at council. However, staff, we did have a neighborhood meeting for the one on Eastman Road, as well as the one on Bill Owens. We had a neighborhood meeting for each one of those cases, and through those neighborhood meetings, we did address some of their concerns and added some stipulations, such as buffering and fencing for the one on Eastman Road, and some buffering, and some trash receptacles for the other one on Bill Owens, and some downshielded lighting on the one on Bill Owens, but all items were approved by city council.
Quick question.
Yes.
Okay. When I saw you, a couple weeks after that, and we didn't take, we didn't do anything, we didn't vote it up or vote it down, would you guys, in a perfect world, prefer us to do one or the other?
Yes, I think based on your charge, it is to make a recommendation to council. Technically, you make a report to city council for them to consider. You guys are more technical in nature, that's why you're appointed, based on your backgrounds and so forth. It is to listen to constituents, but also really to look at the case as community members and weigh in, and then send a report to council based on that.
Because that was, you know, that was the first time I'd seen it on this. I'd seen it once on with the zoning, you know, with the CBM.
CBM.
Well, and then, when Angela, I thought a lot about that since, and then I was afraid that was going to happen earlier with those gentlemen, and I was going to make that statement that, hey, in my opinion, I think we need to vote this up or vote it down, whatever, because we're doing a disservice if we don't. And so, in that case, that one, it ended up with some stipulations passing anyway, or passing.
Yeah, so we had a neighborhood meeting, and? The one on Eastman Road, we had a neighborhood meeting, the neighbors came out, the developer came out, and they came into an agreement on, and I'll tell you the exact stipulations, was a 40-foot undisturbed buffer, and then that secondary emergency access where they were on Randy Drive was going to be gated and for secondary emergency access only, and it was going to have a solid wooden fence, and it was going to be setback at least 40 feet off the roadway.
Along those lines, you know, one of those things, you know, when we get down to the citizen comment, you know, it immediately goes for a motion. Is there a time that we can pause and have some discussion? Can we do that at that point and just say, okay, instead of entertaining a motion, let's have any comments back and forth, so we can kind of see where everybody is and talk through?
In other words, why wasn't that, why did those things, those constellations not come up, and those taxpayers, neighbors, whatever you want to call them, were, why did that not happen with us as it did with the council? Why was there not a meeting before, because we didn't act on it, or, I mean?
Well, we generally, if we have a sense that there's going to, it's going to be a controversial item, we do recommend that the developer have a neighborhood-style meeting that's less formal, where they can kind of talk more freely and negotiate.
They were fairly adamant with the neighborhood.
Correct. And this is more formal, so it's kind of hard, it's harder, you know, in essence, it's everybody's time to, you know, really hear everybody, what they're trying to, you know, figure out and negotiate, but, you know, we try to recommend that they have those neighborhood meetings ahead of time. Sometimes they do, a lot of times they don't. What typically happens is we'll have a P&amp;Z meeting, you know, where we really find out what everybody's issues are, and then we'll, you know, try to schedule one rather quickly, because we don't have a lot of time between P&amp;Z and the council meeting. And like in this case, we had a whole hour where we just talked about that one item, and people were, you know, able to voice concern, and I think it helped that the developer and one of the neighbors spoke after the P&amp;Z meeting and were able to kind of say, well, you know, I might be okay with it if we had 30 feet. Well, that started the dialogue. A lot of times when they come in here, they're, they're just opposed, because they got a letter in the mail, they don't know much about it, but, you know, I don't know what it is, but I don't like it, you know, that kind of mentality. And, and so by the time everybody's kind of starts, you know, and in that case, we were able to kind of capitalize on some of those after-the-meeting comments, and have a starting point of, you know, some consensus building. You know, the other case we weren't as successful with, we had a neighborhood meeting that went for, you know, an hour, hour and 15 minutes. They, they were just going to be opposed to that one, so, you know, but, you know, there was some discussion about some conditions and things. It was, it just was a little different situation than the one on Eastman Road.
And typically, it's this meeting where they first hear the full story.
Yep.
And that's when they start finding their reasons to not want it, but based on a comment that you had made, Heath, I did allow more exchange tonight in the agenda on the subject matter that seemed a little bit questionable among our group, and so I hope that was better, more satisfactory.
Just remember, all the discussion, whether it be from the public or the commission, is during that public hearing. So, when we open the public hearing, it's multifaceted. There's the public hearing, and there's the comment cards that you can address, but then after that, it's still, the public hearing is still open, and that's the opportunity for the commission discussion.
So, I'm going to say no, what they were talking about hypothetically, if we had said no to that view garden, for example, and then the council had said no as well, could they have come back for it again?
Yeah, there's, there's nothing in the ordinance that would preclude them from coming back at the next meeting with the same.
So, then $30 for a new application is really not that bad, as opposed to throwing a meeting and setting all that stuff up, and just try to hand it at the first time?
And we had a zoning case similar on Page Road, where I think P&amp;Z made a recommendation to deny that zoning case. The applicant withdrew before it went to council, and we held a neighborhood meeting here in council chambers, and I think after talking to staff and talking to the neighbors, the developer came back, and it passed through Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council.
Yeah, there's, generally, when there is a neighborhood meeting, and, you know, like I said, we recommend that they do it ahead of time, but it's cheaper to do it afterwards. But sometimes, you know, you don't, you don't know until, a lot of times, people have to see it for themselves that there's opposition.
So, could we make a motion to approve, and y'all, with the condition that y'all have a neighborhood meeting and talk through some of the issues?
I don't know that, I mean, you could, but I don't know that it's binding that they would have to.
No, but city council would know that.
Yeah, I mean, the thing in that regard would probably be to table it and say, hey, we're giving, you know, because you could recommend tabling it now if?
Postponing.
Well, tabling it, bringing it back up, but if, you know, if the applicant truly wanted to say, I don't care, I want to keep going, I think they probably could just go to council. It just wouldn't come with a P&amp;Z recommendation.
Yeah, but even if we recommend the meeting, they can't set it up before council meeting anyways, between the time that we meet and city council, right?
We can. It's, it's quick. I mean, that, because we have, you know, it would have, like, in this scenario, we would have to do it next week, and we generally will send notification letters out to everybody. I mean, we do all the, you know, logistics with it and everything, so we try to give people enough time to get the letter, make arrangements for an after hours, and we generally try to invite the council members so that they can hear those comments and have any kind of input.
So, y'all set it up, the meetings?
Yeah.
Were you all charged for that, to the developer?
No.
So, on something like that, if I'd said, yeah, you know, I'd make a motion to support it, but I recommend y'all have a neighborhood meeting to work out some of these logistics. It might not be binding, but, you know, that hopefully could get done and, or table it.
Yeah, go have a neighborhood meeting, and y'all try to work some of this out. We hear, you know, and the more comments that y'all give us, giving direction, the better it is on, in that regard, or, you know, you can put conditions on zoning. We don't like to, but you can, and the reason I say we don't like to is because those conditions can get lost. We've had that happen a time or two where they didn't get recorded in the record very well, and down the road, we, you know, did a verification with no conditions, and then there was conditions, so.
In his example, though, let's say, you know, approve with, you know, recommendation to have a meeting, if they didn't come to the city council and the meeting has not happened, then the city council can table it for that meeting, right?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't recommend that you recommend an approval with a meeting, because then that's, that's kind of saying, well, y'all have a meeting, but don't come back to us, you know? If you're concerned about that, I would say, y'all go have a meeting and try to, they may not work it out, but at least they've had the opportunity, and I know that's, you know, over the last several years with this, with this commission, that, you know, hey, they've done everything and tried everything, we didn't get there, but that gave the commission a sense of how to move forward.
I think as opposed to just doing nothing, because that makes this look so like, and then the city council ended up passing it anyway, because of the things that occurred in the middle.
And it, and it doesn't stop it, and it doesn't, if you, if you take no action, it doesn't require them a supermajority to overturn it, because there's nothing to overturn. Now, if you recommend denial, that does require a supermajority by council to overturn that decision.
But if we postponed one, and they were able to set up a meeting within a week and got everybody on board, they could still go to the city council, or would they have to come back then to us?
Back to, come back to us.
If we postponed, they got to come back to us.
Skip that one.
Well, I would have to talk to our attorneys, but because this is just a recommendation, you could recommend that they come back, but there's, but there's nothing to stop them from going to council.
Right. Yeah, because we're not binding, so even if we say we table it, they still end up in front of the city council.
They could. I believe, I'll verify that with our city attorneys, but I do believe, even if you said, you know what, we want to table this, and, and the applicant says?
Give you guys a chance to visit and do your thing.
Yeah, says, you know what, I want to take my chances at council, I want to keep going. I believe they could keep going, but council's going to consider the action that happened here, that, hey, we, you made a recommendation, you sent a report that they go and try to work it out and come back, they chose not to. That's different, I think, like what you were saying, than taking no action. It has a different, you know, a look and feel to it.
At least we know some other options.
Yeah.
And then, one more question about the neighborhood meeting. We don't really get a formal report from you guys, just a verbal, like, this was the general consensus. Is there any, if we go forward with this type of stuff in the future, if we were to say have a, have a neighborhood meeting, is there a way to get a better reporting than just a verbal type thing? I'm not sure what it would look like, just saying, like, and I know that's more work, but right now, it's kind of like, you know, not really from the horse's mouth, but just, you know, we, there's not minutes or anything like that for the neighborhood meeting.
You basically have to come and attend the meeting, the neighborhood meeting.
It's, we will, we can try, and it gets tough because of the timing there, you know, when the neighborhood meeting is, you know, we already have staff reports created that we've brought to y'all, you know, we do try to give that verbal report, you know, if we have enough time to get it typed up in a format, you know, that's appropriate in enough time before the meeting, we can try, if that's something that, you know, y'all would like.
I came to both of them.
We volunteer you to go to each one. There you go. Well, but that's the thing, though, like, it would be much better for one of us to be there and actually get the consensus right there, you know, at, at one of those meetings to, you know, relay to the rest of the crew here.
And the reason we don't do a formal report is because those meetings are very informal, and although we are hosting it, it's really not our meeting. We try to stay kind of neutral in that, and try to just be there to answer questions and help steer it.
It's not superstructured.
You know, if they, like, the one that you talked about on Page Road, we didn't go to that one, we weren't invited. They, I mean, which, we don't have to be. I mean, if they want to host it and have control and do it, that's, that's great, too. So, we don't always get invited or a part of it.
Got you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? This concludes today's meeting. We are adjourned.